We usually do it like a one or two. Yeah, they do it differently.
All right, uh, seven o'clock here. If we could all please stand, we'll, uh, do a prayer and pledge of allegiance and a prayer and we'll start our meeting. Uh, Chuck, would you like to lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
To these power heads. Dear Heavenly Father, please shine your grace upon us. Help us to make good and wise decisions. Help to keep our meeting peaceful and cordial. And please protect us as we all travel home. In your name we pray. Amen. All right, I'd like to welcome everybody here to the Wells County Council Regular Session, December third, uh, two thousand and nineteen. First thing we have here is the minutes. Did everybody receive their minutes electronically? Are there any corrections or additions to the minutes? Yes, if not, do we have a motion to accept the minutes as presented? Have motions? Wait a second. All in favor signify by raising your hand. Pose, motion carries there. All right, next thing we have here are transfers, which, once again, we've got quite a few of them because we're here at the end of this, end of the year, so we can't in, end up in the red. We have to have everything in the blacks, so. We have transfers from the clerk's office, auditor's office, sheriff, surveyor, election board, commissioner, jail, EMA, lit economic development, health, local health maintenance, and support adult probation service. Did anybody, I assume everybody received them, right? Uh, was there any questions or concerns over any of those?
I, I saw nothing that, that.
That we need to bring in. I see we have plenty of people out there that may want to, we need to step forward if they need to, but, uh, everybody else is good on those. Okay, again, most of it's, we're at the end of the year, so we're trying to get everything balanced out, so. With that being said, do we have a motion to accept the, wrap them all into one motion for the, uh, transfers?
Second.
We have a second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor signify by raising your hand. Pose, motion carries there. All right, we have one additional, which, uh, here on the general fund from the coroner's office. Did everybody receive that, I assume? Any questions? It's in regards, let me get it out here. We had some increase, increases in deaths here from, uh, unfortunately from some suicides and whatnot, but, uh, autopsy services were up quite a bit this year.
Basically, as she explained, I think it covered it in pretty detail.
Yeah, I see Hillary's back there. And also in the toxicology, yeah. Anybody have any questions that we need to bring Hillary up for?
I'd always like to hear from Hillary if she's got anything to add.
I don't really have anything to add. I think my letter was pretty, I mean.
It was very thorough.
We had four overdoses this year. I'm up to sixteen. I also had twenty-seven total deaths last year. Right now I'm at forty-three. It's just something that's so hard to predict, by the way.
And we always talk about that at budget. We don't know where it's gonna fall, so if we need to do this, we need to do it, so. So again, we have an additional appropriation from the coroner's office, autopsy services for seven thousand, and toxicology for three thousand, though. And that, that covers you for the rest of this year, right?
Right now.
Okay, well, you're, I mean, you're, I know sometimes the bills don't always.
They may vary a little bit. They may roll over until next year, which.
You'll have a new budget, so, okay, okay, so we're good with that, okay. Any, uh, further questions in regards to the additional appropriation? If not, do we have a motion to accept additional appropriation?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor signify by raising your hand. Against, motion carries. All right. I guess we have a, a library bond resolution. Sarah, if you'd like to step forward, you can kind of explain. I know I, I talked to Sarah a little bit, just, uh, because I knew we did something in the resolution earlier after we made the decision on it. And Sarah, if you want to explain, does anybody might have a question in regards to?
Out, out is on.
If I could read, okay. Um, so basically what you have in front of you is what you have already approved earlier in the year. The DLGF, um, has, um, reevaluated their verbiage, reinterpreted their verbiage. They haven't changed, um, the language of a memo, but they've reinterpreted what, how you have to advertise for an additional appropriation, um, if it would exceed your spending of your ABGQ for the current year. So this is, um, now advertised as our DLGF rep requests you to advertise it, and then your approval makes it so that we can spend the bond proceeds in twenty nineteen instead of waiting for twenty twenty.
Okay, so obviously a formality that, uh, came forth since the last time that we, uh, the resolution. Any further questions for Sarah? Yes, if not, do we have a motion to accept the, uh, what, we have a resolution number?
Yeah, um, I, it would be fourteen.
Fourteen. Do we have a motion to accept, uh, two thousand and nineteen dash fourteen resolution of the Wells County Council approving the Wells County Public Library's additional appropriation of bond proceeds?
Motion to approve.
Your motion?
Twenty nineteen dash fourteen.
Second, we have a second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor signify by raising your hand. Pose, motion, Jim, you raised your hand, right? Did you raise? Oh, okay, world. Motion carries there. Okay, I didn't say, I didn't see that, I didn't see what it. All right, so we need to sign this and get it back to you here yet, before you leave, or?
Um, Lisa maybe sends that in to George. If you, yeah, go ahead and sign it before you leave and then.
Yeah, we'll do that, but you don't need to go out the door.
I don't think I need that one. I think Lisa sends it to George. If not, I'll, I'll get with Lisa and let her know.
Gotcha, okay, good deal then. Okay, thanks, Sarah. Appreciate it, thank you. Good luck. All right, uh, Scott?
Good evening, um. Here we are in November already. This year's flown by, for sure. First year as sheriff, it's, uh, they told me it would fly by, and it is flying by, I'll tell you what, so. I left work today. We had ninety, uh, inmates in jail. Thirty-two of those are pretrial for Superior, twenty-three pretrial circuit, and fourteen DOC and four F six, so. Numbers have not been bad for the last couple of months. A couple of weeks ago, we were down in the seventies for a day. But, uh, we creeped back up, and then we had a drug sweep last week. That kind of brought our numbers up a little bit, um, but still sitting steady in the eighties, uh, so to speak. So DOC's a little high right now. We got some that are gonna be heading out, you know, the next week or so. We got several better sentences that'll be going out, so. Those numbers will, will probably be back in the, to the eighties by that time, so. As far as stats, I handed those out to you. Those are there to look at, to kind of see the comparables to last year. There's nothing really that I saw on the ordinary. As far as monthly reported income, um, unless anybody's got any questions, there's nothing really. Uh, obviously, there's two, uh, one more month to go yet, but there is no reporting or no funds received for November's DOC for DM, so there's, there'll be two more that'll go into that. And again, I know I brought this up a couple of times in previous meetings, the comparables to revenue from last year versus what this year is skewed because of the payment of F sixes, which was that two hundred and fifty-two thousand dollar payment that we received in July, I think, so.
Is, is that gonna be the same going forward then?
It is, and it runs from July to July, so we'll get another payment for F sixes next July.
Next July then, okay.
But we still bring in DOC for DM, but that's for everything outside of F six.
Okay.
That, uh, that is there, so.
Sorry to interrupt, Scott, but Steve, you had a question last month in regards to.
I believe it was sheriff's fees.
Yep.
Can you explain what sheriff's fees are?
Um, yes, um, a lot of those are from, um, sheriff's sales, uh, the fees that are collected through sheriff's sales that, uh, come through, no other sheriff, okay. Sheriff's sales fees and sheriff's fees. Um, that's a good question.
This is a big number in the prior month. That was what.
Sales are out of the sheriff's office.
That one, okay, confused the two. The sheriff fees comes out of tax warrants.
Okay.
That typically, like, all that money comes back to you guys, so in some counties, the sheriff's actually part of their salary.
Okay.
So years, years ago, five first months a day is before, it used to be meal money and tax warrant money.
So tax warrant money would be delinquent taxes, is that what?
Correct.
Okay, money there, okay.
Once that gets turned in, then it's the sheriff's responsibility, so we send out notices, yeah, we send out notices to, uh, to the people that live here.
Gotcha.
And then they get notice, and then they can either pay online, or they come up to the sheriff's department and make payments, so that we deposit that money, and then that money, obviously, it doesn't go to us, it goes to the county general fund, but.
Does that also include services process fees on paper?
With the serving?
Someplace else.
Um, I don't know if that shows up on here. That shows up.
Civil process.
Civil process.
Yeah, that's. So that's the fee charged, um, like attorneys, attorneys will send papers out for us to serve people in the community, and there's a fee on that as I go through that. You, that, you guys lower our pension payment with the projection that we have funds that come in that, that line up. I think it should be ten or fifteen thousand a year that you guys lower that by, so. But, yeah, so don't confuse those with sheriff's sale fees.
Yeah, that's totally different.
But sheriff fees or the tax warrants, that's where most of that comes through. That's about eight grand a year, so.
Thank you.
Yeah. Um, the only other things I need to bring, um, just kind of looking at stuff, um, we will be, just to give you a heads up, and I, I can't remember, I was not here this week, or the last month, I was on vacation. Um, but, um, we had a company, Amoresco, come in and do a feasibility study on the jail, as well as, I think, when they were here, they did the courthouse as well. So, um, Kevin Woodward from the commissioners and I went down and met with them to, to see their reporting. They go back and do a three-year study on energy use, um, gas use. They came in, did a full inspection on the jail. Um, you know, part of ours was looking at our HVAC system out at the jail, because the admin side is, is old. Breaks down all the time. We have a hard time finding parts for us, an old pneumatic system. So, you know, we have a hard time in the summer keeping it cool and a hard time keeping it warm up there. The jail side, the reporting for that was very, uh, pleasurable on their side, as far as they said they wouldn't change a thing in the jail. I mean, we've replaced boilers, we've replaced a lot of things over the last several years that they said, uh, that part's really good, so. Just giving you a heads up, we, you know, the two biggest things, which we already knew ahead of time, and I brought up to you guys before in the past, is the jail's gonna need a new roof, uh, in the next, you know, within the next five years. We'll probably have to put a little money into it to, to keep the preventive maintenance on it, to probably stretch it out another five, but that, that's one expense, and the other one is the HVAC system on the admin side. This company recommended replacing that, um, which we kind of already knew, but, uh, so, you know, I can't speak for the courthouse stuff necessarily. Um, I wasn't a part of that, but, um, eventually, we're gonna come before you guys with that study, so you guys can see that firsthand from, from them, and they'll present that to you. With a projection of things that they recommend to change, which would save energy costs in the future going forward, so. Some of the good news is, is they said we, our three-year study, we've actually used less energy at the jail, and they attribute that to, we've, over the last several years, have converted all the lighting to LED. So that has made a huge change. It's something the courthouse doesn't do yet currently, but they recommend them to do, uh, as well there. The bad news is, we actually spent more in energy because the cost of energy's gone up over the last three years, so we probably would have spent a lot more had we not, not done that. But, uh, that was a good sign to see, uh, just doing that throughout our facility had changed the energy cost, you know, along for that, so. So you'll see that coming up in the future, and just, you know, um, just a heads up, I know we're already getting ready to tap into next year's budget, uh, figures, you know, with things that I can't control. It is, um, extradition fees, or, you know, sometimes we can either pay our people to go, uh, across state lines to get people, uh, or we can pay an extradition company to do it. And a lot of it just depends on distance, um, manpower and those type of things. I've already had two calls this week, one in Kentucky, one in Pennsylvania. Uh, we are kind of shorthanded, uh, at this time of year, um, being technically kind of two officers down right now, with one out on medical and, and one that hasn't started yet, so. Um, those are situations, are, you know, you guys, typically, there's about ten thousand in that account. I think next year it gotta drop to eight, so. Just putting that out there. I, those are numbers I can't control necessarily. Those are people that are picked up in other states on warrant that, that, uh, are eligible to be extradited. And then I just have to make the decision what, what's more feasible, paying the money to have, uh, a transport service bring them and go get them and bring them, or, or we, we, uh, make the two-way trip, so. Sometimes it's better for us and sometimes it's not, so in this case, I'm gonna have to take both of them, because I just, I can't pull it off in a lot of it, and that, those distances, it requires two people. And that's kind of our preference to go. When you're dealing with somebody long distance, you have to stop, you have to go to the bathroom, you have to do this, I think, so. So right away off the jump, we're gonna be chewing into that money, and that goes pretty quick, uh, when those things happen. And we may not get another one. Who knows? Chances are, that's probably not the case, but, um, so like, I, we'll do what I can. I've not asked for an appropriation this year, and hopefully I can keep it that way, so, uh, we'll do the best we can on that area.
And to, to recoup that money depends upon the situation. Is it ever, is it ever?
Yeah, I believe the judge, uh, sometimes, uh, just depending on, uh, the courts and what the issue is, they will try to recoup some of that, whether they pay it or not.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
Yeah, got you. So I know they've been successful in some areas to try and recoup some of that cost, but it just all depends on the way that it is in the memorandum, so. Other than that, everything else is doing pretty good. Anybody have any questions?
I, how's the courthouse security? You were gonna review that, is that?
I am, um, I have other things that have stepped forth on that. Um, I know they've opened back up the front of the courthouse there, and, and, um, I kind of, after you guys declined my proposal for a full-time security person, I kind of have to rethink about how I want to handle and organize the changes and things that I would like to implement. I personally went to a two-day court security training that was put on by the National Sheriff Association. I thought it was wonderful. You know, uh, made me think, I, I don't want to go in there and just make changes about stuff I don't know, so, um, I can make it based on common sense, but this was a great class. I put a lot of, uh, energy into that class and a lot of note-taking. There's a lot of things I'd like to, to, to do and implement, um, but I gotta kind of rethink how I want to do that with a bunch of part-time people.
I was just curious.
Yeah, it, it's, it's still there. It's still on the plate. It might be a little towards the back right now, um, but we're plugging away at that. Once we get through the first of the year, I think we'll be in a better shape to start tackling that, so.
Any other questions, Jessica? Yes, no? Appreciate it.
Thanks, Sarah.
Yep, thank you much, huh? All right, um, next we have is the Purdue Extension Contractual Agreement from two thousand and twenty. Does Bill, do you like to step forward? Okay, okay. I was gonna say, we, yeah, I was gonna say, it's, it's all, we don't even, do we?
I sent you a copy ahead of time. I thought I was gonna do a review.
Yeah, yeah, I was gonna say, I don't think we've, do we even vote? It's already set. It's our bill, yeah, it's on this, yeah, so. Signature.
Contractual agreement in the last page also, memorandum.
Okay.
Memorandum of understanding, but we need to send back two, so.
Do you need this now, or does it go, do you pick it up from them and take it through? Does it, does it need to be?
I can take it tonight if you want to sign it.
So with Roger retiring, you're, you're gonna pick up that role, but then is there gonna be someone to replace you?
Yes, no, what happens, um, usually.
Says tightening, that's why I wondered.
County Extension Director.
I see.
So that.
Instead of printing.
Okay.
I'll just do this, and once you go ahead and fill out whatever else, or you guys fill out whatever's supposed to be done, then he can just get it from there, unless he needs it tonight, it's all.
System, yeah, so he's been, that's, in their HR department, it's been advertised for about a month now.
Okay.
Program director and district director that we view the outfits. We've got a couple so far, but they're looking for. And then, once they kind of glean out that pool, they will send a couple of them to Wells County.
That'd be the easiest way, if you can, you guys want to take care of the rest.
So there weren't locals yet, or in a city situation, then perhaps?
There's two, they would have to go through the, yeah, you can't, you know, people here, they gotta go through.
Okay.
I, I had been asked to review that, uh, by the auditor at the time. It was thought that it would be presented to commissioners to sign rather than council, so.
Okay.
I, I did look at it.
Okay, I was gonna say, I'm, you know, I know we probably done last year, and I don't remember how we, it was all, yeah.
Different counties have done a different way.
Yeah, yeah.
Some counties have the auditor sign it, some counties.
Just says county government, yeah. I went ahead and signed it, so, yeah, all of them. My neck, my neck's on the hook, right? I know they said the bill says certain dates, so, you know, what are you doing, you know, yeah.
One county have commissioners, one county they have the auditor sign it, and then other counties have had the, the attorney and county council.
Yeah.
So it's just very, it just says county government official.
Yeah, I went ahead and built and signed it, and they're gonna type, there says the name needs to be typed, so they're gonna go ahead and type and then pick it up from there, yeah. Sounds good. Thank you very much. All right, um, next we have is purchase of property resolution with, uh, Roy Johnson and Blake Guber. Would you like to step forward? As I say, we just received this, um, Monday afternoon, I guess I got mine Monday afternoon.
Yeah, I, I apologize, uh, not to be, uh, more in time other than it was discussed by the commissioners in executive session. And the first opportunity, they had to make an official decision in a public meeting was Monday.
Okay.
So that's, we sent it to you as soon as we could and had some decision.
Okay, because until the last time, we had a, you know, an executive session to be able to kind of go over some things, so at least we had, we reversed on it, and obviously. Yeah, I mean, at least we had a little, I know for myself, it helped to know a little bit about what you were looking at and what your plans might be if it developed.
The procedure in, in terms of how the county acquires property is, is the same, following the same statute. The commissioners, as the purchasing agent, need to make a recommendation to the fiscal body as to the county's interest in a particular site. And then, uh, once that the fiscal body's passed such a resolution, then the commissioners appoint two appraisers, and it's appraised. And you'll recall, and it's in your proposed resolution, the, the procedure, the county cannot pay any more than the average of those two appraisals. And in terms of location, before, we were talking about a former corning plant. So this is south of it on Meridian Road, on the west side of the highway. It's zoned industrial. I know there's a property owner who talked to the commissioners and was opposed, and I, I appreciate those concerns. The present county garage is certainly in a much more densely populated residential area. Uh, like I said, the property is zoned industrial, so you can look at the area plan commission.
Or, the, the one we're talking about right now is zoned that way? It is zoned that way, okay, okay.
The Marcus property is zoned.
Okay, I didn't know.
Industrial, yeah, I checked with, with, uh, Mike Lotz and Heiser Junior, because I had that in, if, if that had been in the corning, former corning property, I want to make sure that that hadn't changed. If he had confirmed that it was, uh, zoned industrial, uh, and.
I can give you a little idea. We've, we've, uh, I've spoken to a myriad of different individuals, um, trying to find something like willing. And when I say the word willing, uh, just to understand, uh, because most of the property owners that own property nearby, uh, have acquired it at a much lower price than what they became. And that's why we were talking possibly of lease options, switching, trading, the county-owned parcel or air acreage on it, I mean, we were searching. And once it was published in the paper, this individual contacted me personally, and that's the only reason we went forward to try to see if this could even work. We're gonna try, but we need your blessing on this revolution to allow us to go forward.
We, we've approached the individual in terms of her proposed option agreement, and that's what we did with the last time, you know, and, and it's kind of scary to sign something agreeing yourself for the average of two appraisals you don't have yet. And so I said, we'd cover that base by putting in a minimum, that if it didn't, if the average wasn't at least X dollars, you wouldn't be required to sell, although you could decide to waive that. The county couldn't force you, but the property owner could say, yeah, it's close enough, I'll, I'll do that, but, uh.
Yeah, I've, I've had so many things that people think I can do to make this work, and it's just not that way. There's a statute, he spelled it out perfectly, and they think I can find about twenty, so they can.
Swapping ground for a long-term lease in the county farm, but when you average it out, they, you know, it might be ten years, and they wanted twenty, or five, and they wanted ten, I mean, it's like.
Just, we, we've been investigating, I mean, if it would be easy, it would've been done. So, he approached me with a phone call, and we're trying to investigate to see if this can go forward.
But if I understand it right, if we agree to this, then as far as the council goes, is the commissioners have the right to go actually purchase the property, right? If they, if they have the money in hand?
They have the right to appoint appraisers and have it appraised.
But they cannot purchase unless?
Well, you've got to fund it, I mean, you can.
But, but I'm saying, though, if they have the money budgeted, that, I'm, I'm, the scenario would be is if they purchase the property, and then all at once found out something didn't work out, where, obviously, they have to come back to the council for any bonding or anything to actually build on it, obviously. But you could purchase, the commissioners could purchase the property, and then if something went wrong to where the council decided they didn't want to go to that dollar amount to fund a project for it, we're stuck with the ground, right? I mean, they, they could purchase.
We would put in, if that's concerned, we certainly put in that any, any commitment on the part of the county's gonna be subject to approval by the fiscal.
You're the, you're the ultimate decision, dollar-wise.
After it's.
You, you've seen the dollar number in the agreement?
No, uh. I don't remember seeing it. Again, I just got it, and I, I really didn't have a lot of time to look at it. No, no, there's nothing. No, it just.
All the resolution is, is designating property.
Yeah, yeah, the legal description and, and a picture of it. Yeah, yeah, the legal description and, and a picture of it, it's all weighted.
There's no survey, we're sitting so many acres off the east, and, uh, that's as good as we, no, no sense in having.
Sure, sure.
We can't have it appraised until we have the resolution, and we certainly don't wanna spend money for the appraisals and, and a survey until we know.
Right.
But, but we know, cause I, I, I know at least one councilman has said, you know, I'm, I'm kinda miffed, or not miffed at commissioners or anybody in particular, just I'm disappointed that we haven't made more progress, so we're trying to.
Yeah, sure, no, that's, that's understandable.
And in fact, uh, I think this has been in the newspaper, that as a fallback, I mean, we've got our county farm, it's not the preferred location, but certainly, if, if the cost of the ground is like a quarter of a million, I'd say a quarter of a million towards that, it's just, it's not, it's not, in the commissioner's opinion, the best location.
Right, we're looking basically, I think we talked early on, you know, Meridian and a Bullseye around one twenty-four, and two miles.
Yeah.
To be in that proximity, to make it advantageous, you're too far east, White Bridge floods, very real bridge floods, so to be in the east and north done, you're coming through the city of Longton, you need your vehicles back.
This property's not adjacent to sanitary sewers, so.
I was gonna say, we know a walk.
Either an extension or onsite, plus the water or water.
I mean, there's a lift station up at that corner, which obviously could be beneficial, but.
We, we could investigate that expense compared to a secondary.
But water would be something that's not out there, if I understand from the last, last time we talked, it was a.
We don't have our own law.
So, well, now again, I know Jim, I, I know after we had our meeting, I physically went out and drove it, prior to that, I looked at all the paperwork and everything, and when I physically drove out there, I was kinda, kinda surprised, uh, when Jim mentioned the environmental issues, uh, I, I certainly seen what I seen, and, uh, I guess for me, there's a lot of concerns there, but, uh.
On this property or the last?
Well, the last property, and then, and then where we're at's only, not that farther away, so, you know, from that standpoint, I still feel concerned about that.
Well, the same, the same things would apply on, on the option agreement we're talking about, that's environmental studies and that kinda clearance.
Oh, that stuff?
No, it's not, nobody's talking about buying it without having that.
Correct.
Yeah, sure, certainly, certainly, certainly. Um, anybody else have some questions in regards to, again, I was kinda surprised, we just got it, and I didn't know if anybody else had talked, I, I didn't know anything about it till I opened that email up and, and looked at it, so I'm kinda still, still looking at it.
As it relates to the placement, is, is it kinda out in the middle of the field?
So I'm, it's right along.
It's got the road.
It's, it's.
It's here.
It's over there.
And why, okay, I have a few questions, so why twenty-one acres?
Well, we just took the property corner.
And you just went down?
Went down.
Yeah, I mean, I could see that, and I thought that that's maybe the.
Nineteen, it could be twenty-four. Or so is it, the option is not more than.
Um, Blake, I wanna tell you, I really appreciate, I know that you've worked a lot on trying to find locations. I personally still would like to keep it, where it's at, tear down that old building, and put up a nice big building. That's just my personal opinion, we already own it, um, I feel like that's a nice location, it has city utilities, and so that's just my personal thing, and I do, I really do appreciate all that you've done, and I'm so sorry that, you know, I'm telling you this, but I feel like that for our money, and for our taxpayers, I feel like that that's a much better option, and I don't know if anybody else feels that way, but that's just kind of my, my feeling on it.
Well, my feeling kinda was the same way, Vicki, Vicki, now we talked a little bit this afternoon, didn't we, Vicki, and, uh, uh, we've already got ground, you know, we can tear everything down. Now, I don't know if there would be a problem with that old building, because I don't know if that's, uh, you know, on some kinda register somewhere, or whatever, but, uh, you know, I know how much it'll end up costing for the utilities and stuff to get out there, and we're in cobbles right now. So I guess I'd rather see it stay right, kinda where it's at.
Do we have any money set aside for this project at all? Um, there's no, I mean, we have a rainy day, obviously, but we don't have any, like, specific money set aside for this project, do we?
Uh, there's a line item that we saved, uh, some monies from the acreage that was sold inside the county.
Mm-hmm, and the cash rent is maybe?
Eighty-five, ninety thousand.
Okay.
Yeah, I did recommend years ago, that some of the cash rent from the farm be set aside for, whether, you, uh, council members ever did that, or not, I don't know.
I think the only thing that I'm aware is a highway fund was created.
After the sale.
From the proceeds from the sale of that part of the county farm that was east of the road.
Yeah, and that was supposed to handle these miscellaneous expenses that were, cause I don't think it'll touch what you're wanting to do, if you went off-site and build a new complex, your engineering and architect fees would be much, much higher, so.
But, but owning, owning the county farm's still not practical, it should be sold anyway. We don't use that farm for what its original purpose was, which was to support the buildings, so.
You'd be amazed how many calls I get about that.
I mean, the county shouldn't be in the land rental business, to be a deadly honest.
Yeah.
It has, it has no bearing on what the county government's purpose is today. The county home farm was to generate revenue for the poor residents, it was a poor farm, that's what its classification was. Once the property, once the buildings in particular were sold off, it has no direct bearing, so my view was that those dollars that are in an asset should be reallocated for the purpose of the highway, was my first impression, so, we have no business being in the land rental business. It, it creates conflict with farmers, it's a publicly rented property, which creates conflict as it's publicly rented, in a way, so, uh, you know, to me, it should still be sold, and offsets go-to-the-highway apartment as an option, so that would've been my first thought, with it. If we were looking at shortages of revenue, anyway.
Well, I think we pretty much all come to conclusion that to do this, it's gonna be very expensive if we go off-site and build a new site, I mean, there's just no, no doubt, it's gonna double, triple, you know, easily double, maybe triple the price of what, uh, you could do onsite, um, if you did tear down, build, whatever. Um, as far as the.
The acreage we have is not adequate.
See, that's where.
It's just not adequate.
Yeah, that's where I kinda disagree, I've always, you know, I'd look at different complexes, I look east, uh, Noble County, I ventured through there and looked at some of their stuff, and the areas that they work on, and, uh, it, it's like anything, it's been, you know, I don't know how far the county highway's gonna go, are they gonna advance and get larger in the future? Again, as I did a little checking prior, we've actually decreased in size, so, um, do we need all that extra acreage for stockpiling or whatever? I, I don't, I just don't, that day I don't see coming with an asphalt plant, something of that nature, I don't see that, that's just not a very feasible thing. Processing millings, I don't see that really being a very cost-effective thing, are we building more roads? No, we're maintaining the roads we have, um, I just don't see us increasing in size, so, um, that's, that's what I'm trying to figure out, is do we need twenty-some acres for a complex?
We, we can make it smaller, I mean, fifteen to twenty-five is always just the, uh, I don't know, fifteen to twenty, technically, I think we're at that.
Sure.
It said, it says not more than, and, and then, the, the next step after, uh, appraising the, the property, you need to inspect it, and, and come up with designs, that's, that's when you design and build, and I guess, design to build, and determine how much room you'll actually need.
Yeah.
Uh, retentionary, possibly, maybe, save some water, possibly.
Yeah, that's anywhere you go, you're gonna have to do that, so that's, yeah.
I mean, that's, we're looking two, five minutes.
Yeah, again, we're right at this place, right here, again, it's, it's, I think it boils, boils down to the process, do we go off-site, or do we stay where we're at? I guess that comes back to that same question, which direction do you go? Do you wanna go spend money to go look at off-site more, and see if we can find the right place, or do you try to, I don't think they've spent a lot of time looking on-site, am I correct in saying that? That it's been not looked at?
It would cost money to get you what you want here, and we have not asked for money to do that. I mean, Nate's spending a little time, a little money, not much, and I think you guys had the results of that, it was not favorable, so, maybe go, we'll have to re-investigate that.
I mean, again, we've.
But the, the site, the way it is, is just not big enough to take down, especially if you're gonna try to operate a highway department, when you have to tear it down and start over, you can't keep working in the same facility when you don't have a facility.
You're talking about if, if, if a building was tore down on the site right now, and another one go in that footprint area or whatnot?
Yeah, just, I mean.
Again, I know during the summer months, most of that equipment's out, if it's, you know, for storage purposes, um, like that, where that white building is, that just stores summer, the chip spreader, the distributor, things of that nature, that normally is out during the summer months, you know, if it was coordinated properly, I know it's, it'd be an inconvenience, but if you coordinated it during the summer months for construction, it wouldn't be as much of a, a hassle, cause most of that equipment would be out on the road, so, you know, it's. Seth?
Yeah, what do you guys think?
Well, we may be getting the cart in front of the horses, or we're approving, or go ahead to make approvals in that spending money on, on appraisals, uh, if we don't have all the information on what it would cost to stay on-site, versus now you're talking about a piece of land that doesn't have the, like you said, the well, or the sanitary water, and we need out there utilities, so, should we be looking at that first, and then, since you haven't found a site that is feasible and workable, potentially, now that we've located that, should we go ahead and find out what's that cost gonna be before you go for the appraisal for, by the way, or do we need that as part of that process, to understand how much it's gonna cost?
Basically, you're saying, can you get the option before?
Yeah.
The appraisal?
I don't know.
I don't know, I don't.
I don't think we can.
To, to get onto the land, to see if it's, yeah.
I think one of the problems, too, is, we've talked about this and talked about this, so I think, I don't, I don't know how, I don't know whether there needs to be a committee, or what needs to be done, but I think somebody needs to look into what options we just talked about.
Yeah.
Because I'm, I'm kind of tired of Blake having to feel like, okay, I gotta find a site, I gotta do this, and maybe, maybe that's not even what we're looking at. You know, I think we need to, you know, a couple people, three or four, I don't know, but they need to maybe look into some of the options we just talked about.
Well, I'd, I'd mentioned to Blake that, you know, Steve and Jim are very knowledgeable in what they've been doing, if that day, that time came, where you wanted to get communication between the council and the commissioners together, that, you know, these two would be, and I asked them, they'd be more than happy to, to step up to that situation, if, if you'd like, um, at least to get an idea of what does make the most practical sense.
At this point, I put that on pause, I wanted to say that upfront.
Yeah.
You guys don't have a clue what I've been through, so.
Well, I, I, I understand, I understand, but I'm saying, if you wanted to get some of, or whoever you, if you're choosing, I know these two have done, obviously, been involved with real estate, and building buildings, and they, things of that nature, and, uh, like I said, they're, they're at your disposal if you'd like them, and they'd be more than happy to, to help you on this, so, if that's, makes sense what the council's thinking here, I don't, Seth, what do you, what do you think?
I was gonna say, with, with the, uh, the current existing site, where you mentioned, Blake, to really do a study there, a feasibility study, tearing down, rebuilding, um, my, my concern would be if we go over to the, the new property that we're talking about, all that stuff still is gonna have to be torn down, that land's gonna have to have, I hate to think of money to clean up the site for the city of Bluffton, I mean, we just can't vacate it and leave that current site a complete mess, the way that it is, so we're already gonna have some costs in tearing things down, but if we were to build on-site there, there's a way to, you were mentioning that would cost some, Nate said it costs more money to really do a logical study, cause I think until we really know what our options are.
But I think that was to go across the creek, right? Is, I, I mean, originally, they wanted to expand it, I'm talking, what he's talking about on, Nate did, or got some cost analysis on piping that creek and moving to the east, if we needed more room at the location we're at now, and I think all of a.
But I thought that was unfeasible.
Yeah, it was unfeasible, I think, if that's what you're talking about.
Well, I was referencing where Blake mentioned that they were gonna need more money to do a study on the current site, is that what you were referencing a few minutes ago, and you were saying that Nate would need more money to really do a logical?
It, to do an end-deaf.
Yes.
It would be all your soils, your stability of, of putting buildings back up.
Right.
I mean, if, if there's contamination, then what, you know, those are the ones, you guys would have to allocate dollars, you guys, the council, to make that happen.
But you'd have to do that on a new site, too, right? To do.
Right, but we have farm ground.
Either way.
We have a, we have a building currently at the end of Wall, Wall Street, that's eighty-nine eighty, hundred years old.
Yeah, we, we understand that, they.
But we have farm ground.
But you still have to go out and do the testing, the soil boring and everything, here, I assume you're gonna do that, and environmental study out here, so you're gonna, you'd spend at either place, I would assume, however.
Right, I mean, there's.
The cost would be either way, I don't know.
I don't know if they'll be identical, that's what I'm basically saying, I can't say they do, but I got.
I mean, soil bores are soil bores, I mean, that's usually where it starts, that's.
It just depends on what you need, how it can be, all that compaction, so.
So do we want to allocate resources to be able to do that on the current site, so we can make a decision about whether or not even it's, that's what I'm getting at, is that, we're, we're kinda sitting here going back and forth, and we don't even know what we don't know about the site that we're on.
Exactly.
And, and so, if we can figure that out, and if it comes back and says, yeah, it's gonna be an easy cleanup, I, who knows what the soil samples will come back, if they can hold the weight of a bigger, different type of building, if we get that comeback and everything looks good, that allows us to make a better decision, versus what we just don't seem to know enough now.
I know the soil bore was done where we had talked about, where Larry Owens had talked about a building going in there, cause Nate sent that to me, and, and there was some, uh, removal that would need to be done, if you wanted to build there, but that was an area that had been filled in, and just different, over the years, you know, back when you move over to the center of the property, like Mike, we were talking over the center of the, of the property, it may change in there, who knows, you know, there's still, you don't know until you soil bore, you don't know that, what those, but even at that, you know, to start doing site prep in a, you know, five, six acre area, if that's the area you're talking about, you know, you're gonna, I know what, I can't remember if it was Randolph County or Bartholomew County, they had a million and a half just in site prep, you know, in cost, you know, but they, they put it out, so there's a project going, so it's gonna be, you know, site prep's very expensive wherever you're at, I mean, it doesn't matter what you do, um, so it's a cost that's gonna be somewhere, and obviously, you start doing, going above that, which in Bartholomew County, they had some problems with, uh, some wetlands and some things like that, and it turned into a bigger, bigger thing for them, but, uh, a lot of unknowns, a lot of unknowns anywhere you go, so. Anything else? It's, I guess, I guess, I, for me, it seems like I just got this, and it was kind of a surprise, and we didn't really have a lot of time, at least, I just started, I got out there today and looked at it, cause like I said, I wanted to physically see where it's at. I do have concerns of environmental issues, I think just because of what's happened out there in the past.
And we would find out those.
Yeah, yeah.
Going through the process.
Through the process, exactly, but my first interpretation is that, that's a concern I have personally, but, uh, but I'm not the science, soil scientist, so I don't know what the, you know, I don't do those things, that's not my credentials, so. So I guess, council, what do you wanna, wanna do here? Chuck, do you have comments, what you'd like?
I think it's very unwise to stay at our current position.
For?
I think it's ridiculous to keep county highway within the city limits.
So you think it should be out of the?
We're looking at a, a place that we've been fifty, sixty years, and, uh, we've outgrown it, it needs to be vacated, cleaned, and left. I can't believe we're still having the same discussion we had a year ago, two years ago, three years ago. I think we need to move on with what they're proposing.
So what do you guys wanna do? Mike?
For me, I've built a few buildings along the way too, and I, I guess the dilemma I run into is that I don't like the site, the footprint, the way it is right now.
Where we're at now?
Where we're at right now. I don't like the footprint of the traffic, the way it works, the way the buildings are positioned, the angles of the property, it's on a curve, it's, it's a wonky little piece of property, then, you know, for me, if I was gonna build a building and put a business somewhere and spend two million dollars, I wouldn't put it there. That, that would be my first impression, that, that's just, that's just me walking around all the perimeter of it and looking at it, ball diamond across the road, and houses right next to it, and, you know, just because you own a piece of property doesn't make it the best place to invest money. And that's something that, if you owned some swamp in Florida, you wouldn't build because you owned it, you'd say, where's the best place to do it? Now, as it relates to the highway supervisor and the people that have to work there, I would sympathize with them greatly if they had to deal with a building project in the midst of their working environment. That would be a dilemma, whether it seems like it wouldn't be a big deal or not, it would be for them. So, you know, again, the notion of putting the money into that property doesn't excite me on one level, but then again, government is not about investment in property, it's about functionality, what makes the most sense, what's most fiscally responsible. Most fiscally responsible, if there's not serious site dilemma with it and the site will serve its purpose, it's probably to stay there. As a person, as an investment person, I would never put a building there myself, with my money, and I don't think Steve would either, and Seth, I don't think you would either. So if it was your own money, you wouldn't do it. I wouldn't do it. Jim, I don't, would you put your office out there?
Out there, of course, where it's at, yeah.
Right, well, that's why.
Not in office.
Well, that's why, that's why the dilemma for me is to say, well, gee, it's, it's good enough for them, because that's what they're doing. That would not be a good argument for me. So I guess I gotta say, I'm a little, I'm, I don't like the way that it sits there, but I don't like to jump into another property just because I don't like where it's at. So see, I'm a little, I'm, I can go, I can be convinced to go either way, but, but I can't be convinced to build the building in the back of the lockers there. That I said I was not for at all, because, you know, it's still an eyesore with the other building sitting in front. Now, if, if you can renovate the building and make it look wonderful, that's there, we haven't done it in fifty years. I guess I have to like, I like the notion of having a little pride in what Wells County's investments are, like, you know, we spent how much on the courthouse to make it look nice? Blake? Four hundred and sixty thousand dollars to make it look prettier and look authentic. It, it, a little bit flies in the face of common sense, but we did it because we wanted to, right? We agreed it was a practical thing to do.
Your steps were falling down.
And they were falling down, but, but, but the money was still spent, it was still five hundred thousand dollars, and, and it was just done, so, you know, I.
I'm just.
I gotta tell you, I just don't like the site the way it is. I, I don't know that I like whatever site's chosen until I see it and know it, but I, I'm not for that site, the footprint that it is today. I, so I don't know if that really answers the question, but I think it, it, it says to me, I would put my money in that hole. That's what I'm saying, so, can take that as it's, as it's said.
Just curious, Blake, does, at one time, Josh had made mention of one large building. He'd, he'd said that he was kind of, you know, it was just in, you know, things were kicked around. And I know like in Miami County, they built just, and I believe they, I think it just got finished, their one big building's what they, what they put in.
That was the upfront, I seen, I just understood Randolph County just got something not too long ago, White County is.
Yeah, they're, they're not finished in Randolph County, because I've checked with them, and they're not finished yet, but they did, I think they were, they bonded for five mil, originally, they were gonna go, not to exceed six point three, and they went for five million dollar bond on it. So they're getting, I guess, pretty close to getting finished and getting up to that. Now, that was just for the construction part of it, they didn't have to.
They took a bond and rewrote a bond, they didn't have a new bond.
Yeah, they, they, they originally went not to exceed six point three, just to get themselves to where they needed to go, but that's, that five million, I don't believe it covered any of their soft costs or anything.
White County with how much?
Ten point one was their value, that they, I don't know if it actually went out for bid, yeah, went out, I don't know if it actually bid, but I seen when I checked online one time that they, one of the engineer architects had a ten point one dollar, million dollar value on it. So I think, I think. I think from what I've seen, I think you're gonna, to do it less than six million dollars on a site like this is probably gonna be pretty rare, if you want, you know, municipal water and utilities. I think in today's construction, you're gonna be, you're gonna be pushing north of that, that number. I guess that's where I kind of come down to, is, okay, do we sit here? Well, that's, that's, why, that's a different situation, but you know, at our site, could we spend three million and tear down buildings and put one big building up and do what we need to do and put, you know, would it possibly be a possibility, or do we go six plus to go? That's kind of my mind where you end up at, you're gonna go one way. The three million seems to cover what you're gonna spend in site work, one way or another, with utilities, getting, you know, because I think it's important if you have a wash rack and, or wash bays and stuff, you definitely want to have municipal sanitation. I don't think a septic system is a good idea when you start going, you know. Yeah, we don't want, I mean, that's why I think really, any way we go, whether we go stay on, you know, or go offsite, municipal utilities is very important for me, water and sewage, I think it's a very important thing. I know a well can suffice, but you don't know where you're going with well water.
Well, you know, well waters will iron.
That's, I mean, but you know what I'm saying, that when you start adding it all, all up, you're gonna be, I think, a little farther north than what you think, once you get started, I, I'm just, you know, I wouldn't be surprised.
My whole thing is the, the location at the end of Washington Street, it's just not conducive. We've got industrial parks that's got potential, we've got things happening. That being said, it's just not smart to put a highway garage in the middle of industrial park.
Isn't that what you're doing right now?
I mean, it's right.
No. I mean, it could be everything around.
We'll take that chance, but it might be fifty, seventy years from now, I mean.
I mean, to me personally, it's, it's, it's right on the edge of it, I, I, that's always been not really a big issue to me.
I'm only donating because it's a central part of the county.
Sure.
I think your appraisal is probably gonna make the same thing as what your other one did, because guess what? You're right on top of the, the same one. I would say, probably get a per good idea of what the machine should back to the industrial zoning like that. I don't expect like, yeah, no.
So Todd, for us to make a decision or be able to get the information from the commissioners, what do we need, because what I hate to have happen is that we leave here tonight and we're nowhere better for where we are.
Where we were before.
I'm with Mike, it's not, I go back for like Mike, that's why I say you're forever going, well, I can see the pros and cons of both. So if we are thinking seriously about, we want to at least really investigate the site we're on now, what do we need to be able to make a decision, that it's a yes or no at some point in the next two meetings or three meetings? I mean, we don't want to go super rush with it, but it's been forever since, you know, it's three years I've been on council.
We've been talking about this, I know.
So I'd at least like to see that we've at least made a decision to say, yes, this is feasible, or well, it's not, let's look at the land instead of, okay, we're here, we're here a year later, we're going.
So in that vein, we basically do need an appraisal to have part of that information.
And then a study on the property we're at now and say.
They're asking for tonight to go forward with.
I don't know, do you need an appraisal, or do you just need an architect to kind of give you some information? I mean, I guess I'm not sure.
Well, on this, this they have to.
I know, they have to.
The building is gonna be a building, and you're gonna have the same expense either way, when you give different designs.
Land cost and the ground clearance, yeah.
I mean, the question, the question here is, do they, do they have, we're just, we would be giving them the resolution, the right to negotiate with this situation, not.
The right to proceed and have it appraised. That will establish not what we're gonna pay for it, but the maximum we can pay for it, we can still negotiate with that. And we're talking about.
And you may have a lot of options.
Anyway, you're just not gonna go buy it, because you want to have all that due diligence.
See, that's for me, if, if, if it was done that way, and it was, you know, you still have to come back to us before you can actually make a purchase. So me, I don't have so much a problem with that, because if you read that resolution, when you start going through it, it almost puts a green light to the commissioners stating that if they agree, you know, if they have the money in hand, that they could actually make the purchase, because we give them the rights to do that. Am I incorrect in saying that, or?
I don't think it's gonna happen that way, because they're not gonna, I mean, what we've talked about with the prior property, I've never even had a response on, but the option agreement sets all, all of these subject twos have to happen, and, and the appraisal has to be done, I think, in thirty days, and we have to supply you the copy, so you'll get a copy of the appraisal, and it's appraised at.
But after that, to go forward, they, the commissioners would not be allowed to actually buy the property until they come back to council to, to go over that?
I don't think it would be prudent for them to.
You wouldn't think so, but I don't know, I'm, I'm saying, you know, if they have money to purchase them, because again, the land is.
Wouldn't be prudent to, because we would have approved, approved anything to.
They would just buy land, yeah, there's nothing to go forward any else, exactly. I, I, exactly, you just bought twenty acres and you may not put a building on, exactly.
We got more than that in the county farm.
I agree. We don't want to buy land, exactly, exactly. That, that's my concern, is that we don't, as long as there's stipulations there, that, you know, before, after, that way it gives you a chance to get the information, what you see of it, what your cost factors could be, if it's possible.
I mean, you know, it's silly to say, come back to us when you've designed a building, I mean, I don't, I don't think.
Well, there, there's preliminary things that will be. Yes, ma'am.
When can I say something?
Oh, you.
At the end.
Yeah.
Well, we're still in the middle of the conversation, I blessed with that, so.
Sure, sure. But like I said, as far as that goes, I, I'm not so concerned, I have no problem with that. I'm just more concerned that if we agree to this resolution, that the actual land could be purchased by the commissioners without the council's discretion and what they found out on it, that's, that's the biggest, my biggest concern.
I, I mean, subject commissioner's okay, and I don't have any problem with sharing.
So at least we, and it can be an executive session, but I think it should be very, you know, in a discreet, thank, situation, exactly.
You'd like to see on that. The commissioner certainly don't want to buy twenty-one acres, not be able to do anything.
That's what, I would think so too, but I just, you know, making sure that we.
I could throw another wrench into it, if I, I, I mean, I of course have that property, you know, Blake, and I consider donating it to the county. Then that solves the problem right there.
That's where?
The end of Adams Street, two hundred.
Okay.
End of Adams, yep.
That's up to the commissioners, I'm just, I'm just throwing it out there, we're debating the resolution for extended period of time. If I were to donate it, then that's be another notion, so, solves a lot of appraising.
So it's another.
One have, more than one of you have remarked, was shortness of time, and like I said, I apologize.
No, 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 no.
The action till yesterday.
But the only problem with that property is it's in the industrial park.
It's actually on the south side of the road, so that's not.
It's agricultural.
It's an ag piece.
But it's, I mean, I'm not trying, I'm not.
I just threw it out there, that's.
I mean, we're not the commissioners.
Someone showed the courtesy to give me a call.
Sure.
Absolutely.
I'm following through.
Oh, certainly, certainly.
No worries.
Yeah. So I guess back to the, we're gonna get back to our resolution, yeah, you did throw a wrench into it there.
I mean, the resolution is just the next step, we, we can't, we can't get appraisers till we get a resolution.
I totally understand that, yeah.
And that's okay, we've gotta select appraisers, and we know that's a bit expensive, and we don't want to.
Sure.
Do that without.
I'll make motion to approve the resolution.
Good resolution.
Maybe you want to.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Ma'am, can you state your name?
I'm Janet Pence of sixteen seventy.
Sorry.
South Meridian, if you went out there to look at that land, you saw my property.
Okay.
That land does not drain, uh, there's a real problem, the drain, in that area, uh, my side, and, uh.
Are you in the woods right there? Because I did see a lot of water.
Across from the east side.
You're, you're across the road, is that from where this, we're talking here, okay.
Half of my farm drains to the west, half of it drains to the watershed, like I said, half of it drains to the east. When it goes out there to the west, there's no, there's no way to move that water. Also, Meridian is a high-traffic road, uh, and very fast moving traffic. They come over that railroad track sometimes, I don't think they touch the pavement till they land. And in the wintertime, sometimes they hit ice and crash into my trees. My house unfortunately is only twenty-five feet from the road. Also, I guess the biggest problem is the high-traffic road. If Barkis is willing to sell land, uh, there's about six hundred acres there west, uh, westernly. I don't know how much Dave owns of that, but that's all Barkis' land, where it's Dave Barkis. There looks to me like Dave Barkis owns over one hundred west. That's, uh, what at least I've found about high tra, the high-traffic and fast-traffic, is these trucks come chugging out their drive, and they're, they're loaded, and they can't move very fast, they get going. It seems to me it's just a bad place to be, uh, one hundred west with traffic that's slower. Also, where's the water run though, the watershed? You'd have to build a retention pond on, on the shore.
Certainly, yeah, certainly.
And would there be a burn? Would you build a burn also?
Yeah.
I'd have to meet all the codes and restrictions.
The water does not move, uh, John Brickley, John Brickley came to me, uh, almost a month ago and told me this is happening. How he knew it, I don't know, he said, I've got bad news, and he said, they're coming across the river from here. And I said, well, where, where are they gonna put the water? And he's building a house there in the woods, and you saw.
Yeah, I've seen the surveyor stakes, there's a bunch of stakes out there, yeah, okay.
He said there's only one inch of fall, four inches of fall there, so he had a proof of a second, a second deck, and that there's no way to move that water.
I know I've seen a lot of water over towards where Helena has their, in that field area there, there was a lot of ponding over there, but that's not where we're, where we were talking here, but.
If you look at Barkis' land west there, there's a lot of water, that's all Barkis, it's almost six hundred acres in there of Barkis. But Dave Barkis owns there, I don't know, but I think he also owns over one hundred west, which is.
Several of the boys own different parcels, and at least they're on different areas.
That's right, now, I don't know, Dave owns it, but it looks to me like mine. That's a, a low tra, no traffic on one hundred.
One hundred south has almost four times the traffic.
One hundred west.
Yeah, she's another mile over.
One hundred west, they own three miles, Barkis, they're over at Barkis as well. But that looks to me like it might be, he would inherit that from his dad, and I, I'm assuming, and that looks like he's moved over there too.
Okay.
Why could out on Meridian, it just seems, you know, slow-moving road where they, oh, Maple Road, where these big trucks can just gradually go, they're coming out of there like you bump two miles an hour, so they don't get up the speed, they're heavy load. Also, they're gonna be coming in and out of there in the wintertime all night long.
Well, that, that's something, you know, would have to, at this, at this stage, what we're looking at here is they're just looking to possibly get appraisals for this property, that's something that would have to be with the commissioners. I mean, it's new to us, I, I'm not aware of it being a done deal, so, yeah. Yeah, really, ma'am, it's not, this is something.
I'm not gonna be informed if it is, I know that, it's gonna be top secret for me, I mean, I'm not, if it wasn't for John, I wouldn't have known this was gonna happen. I just don't know how they're gonna move the water. If you look at that property where, where, there, there western part of Meridian, there's a huge lake back in from that.
I had a conversation with Jared, Jared had a five-year plan that drain goes from the Barkis area all the way to Pigs.
Is it a twelve-inch tile, and where's it gonna run?
There is a tile.
Oh, where is it running?
There, there is a tile.
Where's it at?
I don't have Beacon Snyder in front of me, but if you follow Beacon Snyder.
They just put in a twelve-inch tile to the east of it, it's not.
Five-year plan, and they're working their way backwards to the thing. He said, if, if this happens, that project could become a three-year project, instead of a five-year plan. Drainage, yeah, it can be an issue, but I think it can be resolved very easily, so. Those are also issues that every plan has on development, and approvals to.
Sure. That would have to be, yeah.
Everything has to go through their office before it's even allowed, so. Engineers have to approve the design.
So, engineers have to approve the design, outfall.
We, we appreciate your concerns and appreciate that you brought that up to us here, so. I guess you made a motion, Seth, um, for resolution. What's the number on resolution?
That would be resolution fifteen.
Fifteen.
I think there's a lot more discussion to be had on this whole issue again, but I will second Seth's motion that we could move ahead with at least the appraisals.
Appraisal. I think I'm, I guess with further discussion here, I, again, my concern is what I'd stated, that they cannot actually go purchase the land until we, after they get the appraisals. I, I know, but we, I know you wouldn't, but we just wanna make sure that some things now, you know, when this come to us, it was a surprise. I mean, I'll be honest with you, Blake, this was a, a real surprise. I didn't know anything about it.
You sent an email saying.
Yeah.
Until they decide.
Yeah, I, I totally understand, but prior to that, there was, I, nobody else I think knew this. So, we just wanna make sure we understand the process. Sure, we understand the process here, so. Um, again, if that language, we just make sure it's in, that we can make sure that we're all on the same page, so. That, that's my biggest concern. I have no fear in going to look at it. Um, Jim, you had, you know, we always had some concerns about environmental, you, what you think?
That all gets checked out.
Yeah.
You know, I, it has to be checked out.
Yeah.
That's just.
That's obviously very reasonable.
It is far enough away from where the original problem is. Usually that's outside of, because there, down by the railroad tracks is where they're at.
Yeah, it's about, I think, a quarter to a half a mile from a concerned area there, so.
Groundwater wells would be the only next.
That's, that's why municipal water, you eliminate that issue of anything of a future problem, so.
I just asked for Blake, uh, because I drafted the option and, and a little different from the last time and it did have a, a permit, I think I put it bold that, you know, that he's not obligated to sell it unless it appraises for an average of at least X dollars. I don't think we even wanna select the appraisers and have it appraised till we get some kind of a feedback from him. If he's not willing to sign that kind of an option agreement.
This is not, I'm not even.
Last time we're.
Oh, okay, so that is an easy.
My, it's really easy, wouldn't it call?
Yeah, yeah, you'd think, but.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. Again, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Vicki, what do you think of, to get to this point, you know, just to look at it from this angle?
There's a lot of things I don't like about it, so, but that's fine. That's, that's.
I mean, I'm, I'm.
That's the monster of it all.
Sure, sure. Anybody else like to comment before we take official vote? Chuck?
Okay. Here's with that being said, we have a motion, we have a second. All in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed? Five two.
Five two. Now, again, we're gonna go do the appraisal part and then we'll have to look if it gets to that point.
You're going to first talk to the person who wants to sell.
Yes, send him, and, and send him a letter and by email and say, give me a response by, because we, we don't want, I, I think he said, we don't wanna even go to the council unless we have some response, you indicate that we're just not gonna do it, we're saying to do it. We've tried that before.
Right.
Okay.
So, we don't get any kind of response. And I don't keep putting whatever minimum we want. If he says if it doesn't praise for at least fifty thousand dollars an acre, well, yeah, right. And opponent, you know.
Sure. All right. Well, that's where we're at at this stage, so I guess, well, keep us, please, keep us posted of what, uh, what's developing, if you could.
I think try to work on, trying to find a spot.
Sure.
Appreciate it. I know, doesn't feel like we pursue.
Very understandable, very understandable.
Hopefully, this is the only time you'll ever have to do that.
Yeah, all right.
The only other comment I wanna make is, you know, Mike said, well, I don't think that would be a nice place to have a new building or whatever. How many people in here, I mean, I don't, and I know Todd, you know what other highway departments look like because you've been around and I know Blake has. I personally couldn't tell you where Adams County's highway, you know?
Most people don't.
I mean, I don't think they're, they're to look beautiful.
Roads plowed and they're road maintained and they don't care.
We want our roads taken care of and we don't want them sitting around in a beautiful building.
Trust me, not very many people move to a location just because you have a new highway garage. There's other reasons why they move.
That's right.
Very understandable, so, okay.